Invitation of Pledge will stand and Dr. Hager, would you please deliver the invocation and pledge?
Heavenly Father, come and prepare day, Lord. We thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us and we thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Lord, as we conduct the business of this institution. Lord, we ask you to give us guidance and wisdom as we continue to move forward. Once again, we thank you for all the blessing you've bestowed upon us. All these things, Lord, we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed are we to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Sergeant Newton. All right, let's go ahead and get this part started. Approval agenda, consideration approval agenda. Page one of board book.
Motion will approve the agenda for today's meeting?
Motion by Mr. Pedersen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration approval of the minutes of the January board meeting. Mr. Garrison makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Dr. Hager. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Consideration of college financial reports, would you think?
The term of the financial section of your board books starts on page seven. This is year to date for this fiscal year as of mid-year, so I'll be somewhere pretty first, as compared to the same time of the previous fiscal year. You can see that we're doing well in tuition and fees. I think once we get, this is a lagging report, so you don't see all of spring enrollment yet, but as you see the spring numbers, I think we'll be very pleased there. Look at that in a minute. And then as next month when you see this report, you'll see the results there. Other categories, very similar. Again, as I've called attention in previous, previous months, the federal grants category of the previous fiscal year includes some one-time careers money, so that's what throws that off just a little bit in terms of comparison. The next page looking at our expenses, very similar to, to previous years. And then finally on page nine, looking at our changes in net position, revenues minus expenses. You can see if you factor out the one-time money that's in that previous year, it's very comparable to, to the previous year. And then looking on page twelve, we look at our budget to actual, this is our preliminary January numbers. You can see on that tuition and fees number, we're closing in very close to our budgeted amount. Not only did we budget some decrease in enrollment, but we've actually seen some increase in enrollment in our spring term. So we still have a little bit of enrollment yet to go for a portion of the coming summer. That is not, of course, our registration's not open yet, but I would expect that we were, are, we will easily be able to meet our budgeted numbers there. So that's excellent. Other revenue categories, very much on target for this time of the fiscal year. And then on the bottom half of the page, looking at expenses, sort of using that fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year as a benchmark, you can see that those categories are all also right on target. On page fourteen, looking at our capital budget, we have just about, we've pretty much wrapped up a number of projects there, including a lot of the parking improvements we've had on campus. We finished up the ball field improvements that we had over the summer. And then we have just recently completed our upgrades at the Westwood Dip Center, so we're looking forward to promoting those upgrades as well. Then on page seventeen, looking at our cash position, very comparable to what you've seen through these months for this portion of the fiscal year. This is the beginning of February. So this is before we've done spring A just yet, so we'll see that factor into next month's report. Then following that, looking at our certificates of deposits, we don't have any changes on that. We were trying to get past the holidays and so forth before we start moving those certificates to community foundation deposits. So we'll see what you can ask. Following that then, the bid report doesn't have anything to report either for this month, so that could be our point.
I think Charlotte, I may have missed this one, my pen blew up.
Page thirteen.
That bottom line, we did about double what we normally run on that report. And our cap did not, crazy big. Did I miss something that there's a difference there? Like a nine point, nine point three bottom line?
That's actually, that number changes quite a lot depending on where in the fiscal year you are. So it is probably a little bit higher than typical, but you also have to recognize that some of that's being used in the capital budget. And this is just the upgrade budget. So while we are ahead of the game, maybe not as far as it may look at that, some of that's timing because of that point in the fiscal year.
Just never seen that big of a timing difference.
Yes, it is larger than typical. And I think that's indicative of our enrollment hopefully having turned the corner as well as a number of one-time ones that we've gotten with the state of purpose due H P nineteen, I paid for parking, and then also the, we're still using the care's money for the H P A C project.
I'd like to motion to approve the financial report as presented.
Mr. Pedersen makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
In one post. Moving on to President's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to ask that Ms. Catherine Clark, our Ag instructor, come forward and talk to us about Ag Connect.
Hello, nice slide and everything. All right, so a little backstory about Ag Connect. This is my baby. And I grew up here, so I grew up on the AgXO, great memories of it. And you know, my background's in agriculture, so I get the side of it that it's got away from agriculture, which is our whole goal of that bit. And so with COVID and us not having that for a while, I went basically this summer around to different industries and agriculture and kind of pick their brain of what would you like to see? And so we revamped it to this Ag Connect format, which we had during twenty twenty, twentieth and twenty-first at the Coliseum. We have great feedback from it. Basically, we formed a committee to help put this together. And on Friday, we really pushed more of the ag industry setting. We pushed for our FFA students to try to expose them and get them there. And so we had different activities that they can compete in. We had five schools that participated and looking to expand that for next year. And we have lots of people on campus that helped out, but I really appreciate too. So Friday, for example, we started at nine o'clock with those students. We did a tractor driving contest. We had a TRC virtual welding trailer there, so the students participated with the virtual welder, Mr. Jared Joplin. Gus did an awesome job in a nail driving contest for the students. We had a group of a CDL trailer there, let students do the CDL driving. I hosted an Ag trivia for students to participate in, and then they also had three workshops they could attend. So we made sure that the students had lots to do there, that they weren't bored, and they could also visit the booths. The booth was a different thing too, because when we were selling the booths, we revamped it to the, how to be agriculture. So we didn't have American makeup or all the chiropractors and that kind of the stuff. It was just agriculture-related vendor booths that were at the event. And Friday also was a lot of workshops. There was a lot of needs for different workshops that our ag industry wanted to see there. And so we did a new format along with the vendor booths of offering different workshops that they would like to attend. So like the H two A garden was a big one. We had marketing company from Charleston come in and talk up with them. And we had estate planning, private applicator training, all of those were the ideas from our ag industry, what the ag industry, what they wanted to see at that event. And Saturday was more focused on kids-centered and more of like a homesteading setup that worked pretty well. The kids' activities worked really great. We're looking at expanding that for next year. We had the petting zoo. I know Joyce always did a great job with the petting zoo. I didn't have those resources like she did, but the petting zoo that we had did a wonderful job with that. And then we ended Saturday night with a new thing of a school to add dinner awards. And the awards were voted on through our committee that we had, and Mr. Gus in there helped create those awards. They were very nice awards that they made. So we had a nice school to add dinner. Almost two hundred people attended that dinner. We had a Q and A session with different leaders in agriculture there and then gave out our awards to our winners. So all in all, I mean, we're looking to grow and expand. We've already met to, you know, take feedback of what to do to make it better next year. But I think it was the direction and the vision and then the vendor side of it on the agriculture standpoint was very pleased to see it going back to the agriculture roots. I think it was great for our students too, because they have that chance to network and then building that network and those relationships with our ag industry local around here too. So that's Ag Connect kind of in a nutshell. Questions?
Do you have high area high schools involved?
Yes.
Do they get any exposure to the farm or the rodeo or anything else during this or any other time of the year?
As of right now, no, but working on it. So, well, I shouldn't say that. We did a bar marmalade this fall, and that was a really good success. And so we're looking at keeping that at the farm. And then March fourteenth will host the old pre-development event that Joyce used to do, which will be a lot bigger. And then hopefully eventually we'll end up having some more of those activities out at the farm. So yeah, no, I'm working anyway. That place is beautiful. We need to be utilizing it. We need to be having students out there. We were just talking about those and even incorporating some 4H chapters and stuff out there too. So we're working on it definitely. But our students have been out there too a lot. So my annual science class, my advanced annual science class, I'm meeting with them more out of the campus than I am actually on this campus. So yes.
My daughter and I were there most of the day on Saturday. She had a blast.
Good.
The seminars were great. Loved the new format.
Good.
They all made sir.
Yeah, it's awesome. I did too, yeah. And I think like that homesteading thing just like took off, so that is really what I'm hoping for, I guess.
And everyone I went to had tons of people. So, I mean, they were crowded. Seats were filled.
Yeah, we have room to grow. We have room to, you know, of course make changes, but I think that the vision's there and the thought process is in there. It can grow and be a great event, definitely, so.
Good to see FFA in there too.
Yes.
I was a FFA or Neelamville High School, Star Shepherd Farmer in nineteen eighty-one.
Hey.
Nice. Star Shepherd Farmer, salt. But that's great. We need to incorporate them. That's a good view.
Definitely.
Smart thing. Maybe those FFA kids will go to school here someday.
Yes, no, I'm working hard to build those relationships fully. I just gave a report to Bill this morning to go talk to their chapter and stuff, so. Yep. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. The event went very, very well.
Thank you.
We recognize how much work we put into that.
I'm glad you opened the heart, that's for sure.
Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Hall of Fame banquet. So on February third is the kickoff to our alumni reunion weekend. We hold the Hall of Fame banquet, and this year we inducted Don Crandall in the contributor's wing. Danny Foster from women's basketball, Chuck Malone from baseball, Mallory Seabert from softball, and Anna Vogt from women's basketball. The event was well-attended, went well, came off without a hitch for the first time since we started. We actually had rings by the time of the event, so that was a, a big win right there. And moving from that into the alumni reunion, we started that morning with a pancake breakfast at seven AM in the Best Activity Center and finished with two games in the Lively Center, five and seven against Mowley. And between those two, we had a reception for the Alumni Star, a performance by our own music department, an alumni art exhibit, and we unveiled the community-sponsored Gene Best statue in front of Lively. So all in all, big weekend, lots of success, came off without any problems, especially given that we were stocked in with ice and snow for the entire week leading up to it. So that did add some complications in the prep of the weekend. Now I'd like to call the whites, Cindy and Buddy, up to talk about our annual Jazz Fest.
This is our thirty-first annual. We keep track of it. It's the second longest running jazz festival in this side of the state. We had seven area jazz bands, the Funky Butt Brass Band, I'll try not to say that too much today, and the Hall of Fame Jazz Band participated in the festival. Two of the band directors and one member of the Funky Butt Brass Band attended our festival when they were students. It's going to run itself pretty, pretty soon. The Junior High High School and Three Rivers College Jazz Bands received a one-hour clinic by jazz specials and Funky Butt Brass Band drummer Ron Sykes. This year marked the return of our three consecutive evening concerts. We, we cut it back past COVID to make things safer, but we're back at the full steam this year. The Funky Butt Brass Band performed on February ten. The All District Jazz Band is a select group of high school musicians from across the area and was directed by Dan Shunks. The band met and rehearsed and performed on our campus. The Three Rivers College Jazz Band and the All District Jazz Band presented a concert in the attendance center on Saturday, February, February eleventh, and approximately eight hundred and fifty people attended our three-day event.
This gave us a chance, even though this wasn't completely planned, to spotlight community colleges. Ron Sykes, he was the festival clinician on Thursday and then performs with Funky Butt Brass Band, is a graduate of Jefferson Community College. And he called it a testimonial when he told the audience how much that meant to him. He knew that as a freshman in college, had he gone to a university who might have succeeded. And so now he's in a thirty-year career, and he owes that success in his mind to Jefferson College. Dan Shunks, who directed the All District Jazz Band on Saturday, is a graduate of Mineral Area College and has retired from teaching and is now the director of their adult jazz band and their community band at Mineral Area. So it was really nice that we have this little community college package going, and everybody there promoting community colleges and what they can offer. So all those high school students got to hear that you can start here and end up playing drums in the New Orleans band. It brought students and parents and families to our campus that might not have otherwise come here because we involved in the All District Jazz Band Jackson students and Cape Girardeau students, and those don't always make it here. The, the Thursday involved our more traditional groups, meaning Papa Bluff, Dexter. It also involved a new school that participated, which is Calvin High School, Scott County. That was new for us. That's a relatively new director, and they brought their band down. So there's another little pocket that we might draw from.
They like to come here because this is not a competitive festival. They're about to visit those competitive festivals. They get a learning clinic here and perform in front of an audience. So it kind of gets them in the mood to be in shape to play for a competition that they're very soon going to be undergoing. It's a kinder, friendlier festival, which we've always liked.
We were really happy with the turnout, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night. Happy with that turnout. I remember Ron Sykes was behind me as I ran the sound in the sound booth, and we were turning around and saying, look at this crowd, we're back. And that was just the neatest feeling, that we were back. And we were planning for twenty twenty-four. It's underway. I believe we're looking at the
Jubilation Jazz.
Jubilation Jazz is our little concert there. So I think that should be a big draw as well, Jubilation Jazz. So we were excited about that.
Any questions for the whites? So I want to say Cindy and Buddy, thank you so much. You have thirty-one years of doing this. The number of students that you've been able to bring on campus to expose to our community what the college is and what a great start it is for an educational career.
And he was in high school last year. He's been in the All District Jazz Band, and he's my bass player this year.
So it's, it's a big deal. It brings a huge number of students and becomes not just a learning event for area music students, but a recruiting event for the college as well. And it allows our longstanding music faculty to get eyes on some potential recruits that they might like to go after to be part of their program.
Already have one. He's only a junior, looking like.
So thank you for all the work that goes into this. Anytime you're doing a huge event, it is a lot of work. And y'all have been doing this one for a long time, and we appreciate it.
The directors also feel like home when they come here, and that's exactly what I want them to feel like.
Thank you. So now I'm going to ask Mr. Will Cooper to come forward and talk about the SBLA District Twenty Conference that we held in Calgary.
All right, so last Tuesday, after a couple of delays to implement weather, we finally had the SBLA District Conference. We had fourteen schools participate with a total of three hundred and fifty students, so we had a lot of students in the attendance in there. So the way that the conference is formatted, they call it a conference, but it's basically these students competing to see if they qualify for the state competition. So the whole morning, the students were going to different events, and we kind of use the theater as the common area. So Three Rivers College had the opportunity in that common area for two hours to talk to the students about our programming, talk about the marine college in general. So it was a great opportunity. We had student services there. They spent an hour with the students and then career ed spent an hour talking about what different routes you can go with business and the different fields and areas. So it was a really good event. We really appreciated the exposure. And a hundred of the three hundred and fifty students qualified for state, so we're going to have a really good representation this year at the, for the state, for the, for the business leaders. So anybody have any questions?
My wife is one of the judges. She's a retired business teacher. She had a good time. She really needed one.
It was a really good event. We're glad to be a part of it and have a chance to interact with the students.
Absolutely.
Great opportunity. We enjoyed it.
It's a good group of students to have on campus as well.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
And we're already planning for next year, so I think that'll be a continued on there. Thank you.
Fantastic. And now I would like to bring up Ms. Regina to talk about gas card grant. So Regina Morris, our director of community.
And so we've actually recreated a partnership with the MSALU, which is the Missouri Student Scholarship and Money Foundation. Five years they approached us and stated that, you know, we could apply for yearly grants. So in two thousand and nineteen, we actually applied for our first grant. I'm going to do a little bit of history with it. And we were actually able to get a food pantry grant for five thousand dollars to help start a food pantry to help the students with necessities that they need. And then in two thousand and twenty, we actually were able to apply for a technology grant, which we were able to purchase laptops because COVID put us into a new learning. A lot of students did not have those laptops. And then we were also doing computer rentals and webcams with that. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, we actually were able to apply for another five thousand dollar grant and were able to get more assistance for a few students with some bills to keep them, which would prevent them from breaking screen. And then we were also able to restock that food pantry because we were seeing the need that students really need that, those food pantry services with COVID and being laid off and all of those events that were happening. In two thousand and twenty-two, we were able to go ahead and get a thirty thousand dollar grant. We actually collaborated with Dr. Phelan, and we were able to get thirty thousand dollars to help purchase the CNA, lobotomy, and the CMT required equipment so we could start those programs. Then our most recent grant is the food gas card grant, I'm sorry. And we were able to get a five thousand dollar grant for gas cards. And we went together in student services and based on the criteria that we were seeing, the needs, the students, they were going to the faculty. Some of them were having trouble getting back and forth to class. So that's how we kind of decided to go with the gas card grant, because the gas is expensive, of course, and then it would be available for those students who had emergency needs, so we could keep them in class and retain them and hopefully help them improve their degree. Any questions?
It's been used very much so far.
For the gas card grant?
Yes, we just.
We just started this. We've actually got the application ready to roll out. We just received our money in the library for this one. But the other ones, except for the thirty thousand, I think we're still working on that one, the other ones we have totally used. You know, I think we were able to help about thirty-four students with our technology grant. Food pantry grant, we, you know, put the whole five thousand in for it to start the food pantry. We brought freezers, we brought shelving, things that we needed to get that pantry going. But I will have some numbers of the gas cards. We're going with a forty dollar gas card, and we can help a hundred and twenty-five students is what we, the committee has decided.
So this is an example of one of the many ways that we're looking holistically at our students and what their needs are and where are the gaps that create barriers to coming to class and coming up with innovative solutions and partnerships to address those. So that really, when we're successful with this, the student only has to worry about school.
So this will be available to the remote facilities as well to?
Yeah.
Yes, we will have five gas cars sent to each external location for that emergency situation. And then of course, we'll have a quick turnaround when that student needs the gas card here for campus as well. But we wanted to have them available, because when it's an emergency, they can't wait a week to get that tank of gas. We want them back in class and we're able to succeed.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And moving on to some upcoming events, currently going on, starting February fourth, but runs to the twenty-fourth, our alumni art exhibition. This was curated by Mr. Steve Whitworth, local artist and director of the Margaret Bartwell Art Museum. Then on February twenty-first, we have our next patrons event, which is Wings Dublin Irish Dance. That's sponsored by Billy Howard Architecture. Show starts at seven. Fifteen dollar ticket is always going to be a fantastic show, not one to be missed. Then following that, on February twenty-third, we'll host our annual Papa Bluff Trivia Night. Dinner doors open at five. Trivia begins at six, a hundred and twenty dollars per team, and there are still some sponsorship opportunities available for this. It is a fundraiser and it benefits scholarships. Then the final center stage performance of the year, Cinderella, will be March fourth and fifth and March eleventh and twelve. Gearing up for that, the show's coming into shape and should be another great performance. And then on March fifth, we have everyone's arraider day. So we're focusing on our community, and this time we're going to focus on a doubleheader game at both J D Brains Field and Roger Cattell Field, one softball, one baseball game. So they'll softball versus Kankakee and Raiders versus Marshalltown. So this gets more members of the community, students, and potential college students on campus for different events with the idea that once they become more familiar with campus, they're more likely to be comfortable and want to transition into becoming students on campus. Then on March ninth, we'll host Social Services Day from nine to one. It will take place in the lecture hall of the Robert W. Classer Free Enterprise Center. Focuses on social work professionals, exploring how they make their degree options, career outlooks, social work, psychology, and behavioral health support. Then following that, we move into spring break, which is the halfway point for the spring semester, quickly rolling towards commencement. And that, Mr. Chair, is the President's Report, and we do have executive session hours.
All right, so I will look for a motion to go to executive session. I'll make that motion.
Dr. Hager makes a fine motion. Is there a second? Dr. Richardson. Would any of the doctors like to make a motion? Anyway, roll call.
Mr. Pedersen?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Absolutely.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good.
We are adjourned to the executive session. Thank you all. Back here. What kind of speech in the big room? I know you said you were here a year ago.
Okay.
A speech in the big room.
I don't know that people will pass this on the speech.
There's one. Well, I've never looked, but we have a bunch of one here. There we go. Now we're back. All right, back to where we were before the Now we're back. Alright, back to where we were before the, uh, executive session, and we are at, where's my glasses?
Item six.
Item six, consideration, items for consideration, discussion, and vote. Number one, consideration, discussion, and vote on the Butler County hazardous mitigation plan.
Uh, every five years, Butler County has to update and reaffirm a hazardous mitigation plan. Both the city and the college are part of that as signatories. Uh, we had part in planning and developing the plan, and now I present the plan to you with the recommendation that we signed.
Is there a motion from, uh, Dr. Payne's discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Dr. Hager? Second?
Second.
Mr. Patterson. This is a roll call vote.
Trusty Patterson?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shaw?
Yes, me.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Let's move on to consideration, discussion, and vote on reaffirmation of BP zero three four three conflict of interest.
Uh, yes, every two years, we must update and re-adopt the conflict of interest policy, board policy BP zero three four three. Uh, the history says it was, uh, current policy adopted in twenty seventeen. It was originally adopted, I, no, that, that's just wrong. We should have said twenty twenty-one. Uh, so the current one was twenty twenty-one. It has been reviewed by the attorney, and no changes have been made.
Okay. So is there a motion to reaffirm BP zero three four three?
So moved. Sorry.
There we go. This would be another roll call vote.
Trusty Patterson?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shaw?
Yeah.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
Alright, let's move on to consideration and approval of all personnel actions and associated documents.
I'll make the motion to accept all personnel action and associated documents.
I'll second motion.
That's a motion by Mr. Garrison, second by Dr. Hager. Roll call.
Trusty Patterson?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Garrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shaw?
Yes.
Trusty Williams?
Yes.
And seeing nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Please, sir.
Sorry.
On favor?
Alright.
Reminder, the next meeting is on Tuesday, not Wednesday.
Yes, did you show up on Wednesday and on Thursday?
I sure did.
Ready, Mark?
What's the, what's the reason? Why do we fire him? Spring break.
Mark, when you find out anything more about that, I'll-